Called this meeting to order. Hello, everyone. This is the regular meeting at 5:00 o'clock, July 2, 2013. At this point in time, the first thing on the agenda before we go any further is to have the city manager Doug Robertson to give a presentation or announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's actually something that we didn't put on the agenda, something that we have kind of gotten away from a little bit, the employee of the month. We're looking at maybe trying to come up with a more creative way to honor our excellent employees. We do have kind of a special award that I have taken the liberty to award, and that is the employee of the year. We have a manager in our code enforcement division, George Duran, who has obtained and overseen literally millions of dollars in grants, helping clean up the city of tires, trash, weeds, abandoned buildings, any number of things, even going so far as working with the building division to board up homes using city staff when it's necessary to do so. He's been proactive in countless numbers of cases, meaning that you all and I hear less of them, simply because he takes care of getting that job done, and he does an excellent job at it. That alone is reason enough. But in addition to that, about two years ago now, he took over management of business license with no change in pay, other than a pat on the back and a job well done. Thank you, George. But he also is in the process of updating that, that system entirely. And he's currently developing plans to go from what was a very difficult-to-manage complaint-based system, where the public would routinely ask, "Well, why aren't you doing this? And why aren't you doing that?" And he very deftly would answer them that, "Well, we base everything on complaints, because that's the direction we have from the council," even though a lot of the public wanted something more proactive. So after several years of dealing with that, now this council has decided to be more proactive. And I'm looking forward to the next year as he implements those changes as well. All the while, he is a family man, leads his family at home. And also, by the way, in his spare time, which I'm not sure where it came from, but in his spare time, he went out and got a bachelor's degree in public administration and just graduated this spring. George Duran, if you would join me down here, I'd like to shake your hand and give you an award. George, I said a lot. Is there something that you would like to add? I don't know.
Well, my wife and my kids just came in. Thank you. Really, I have to thank Doug, have to thank Bill, Chris, Kevin, all of the development staff, my staff. Really would not be in this position, being acknowledged right now, without the support of my staff. They're really an outstanding, dedicated, focused, positive group of guys and gals who, day in and day out, come in and just really do their job and do it well. And, I mean, really aside from just the development staff, there's other staff in the city that definitely see the big picture and understand the complexities and the work that we have to, that we're just really trying to accomplish. Purchasing staff, public work staff, we're last-minute, a lot of last-minute requests, definitely. So I definitely have to, I dedicate that to them.
Well, George, you've done a great job at everything that you do, and it is one of the more difficult jobs in the city. And just your attitude about it is exemplary, and then you do so much more on top of that. So congratulations on being the employee of the year.
Thank you.[259.14][259.14](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations.
Yeah.[262.14][262.14](APPLAUSE). Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. In all the time I've been on the council, other than the city manager, I think you and I have communicated more about all the difficulties and issues and things that are going on, complaints that we've received. But I echo what Doug said in looking forward to the proactive approach and how we're going to implement that. So hopefully, we'll be seeing that soon.
Any comments from other council members? Again, thanks, thank you for the hard work. Thank you, and thank the employees for showing up and supporting it. And we will now move on with our council meeting. This is the regular meeting of the city council, the city of Victorville, and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing District. This is the time for anyone to address this member council. I had no cards for anyone to address the council. And at this point, I ask that there be a roll call.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have items for a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There are six items on this evening's agenda. The first two, one is for the airport authority and the other for the city council, are related. They are both existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. And the parties, it's the SEC versus city of Victorville litigation, it's more fully set forth on the agenda. Items C and D are both anticipated litigation. The first is pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4, and the second is with respect to government code 5495-6.9D2. The fifth item is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. This pertains to property at Southern California, just north of Southern California Logistics Airport. The negotiating parties are Inland Energy and Doug Robertson, and the parcel numbers are all listed on the agenda. And the last item is public employee performance evaluation in accordance with government code 5495-7.B. To the extent there is reportable action on any of these items, we will report it at the commencement of the 7:00 meeting or immediately following the closed sessions.
Any question or comments from the council members? At this time, we'll adjourn to a closed session. A little late, folks. This is the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville. We just came out of closed session. I'd already announced that this is the regular meeting of the city council, sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics, rail authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency, to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. We were in executive session. We have come back into the regular session. Since we've just come out of executive session, ask the city attorney to give the announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We went into closed session on six items, all listed on the agenda. The code sections under which we went into closed session are all set forth, as well as the parties and the litigation. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those closed-session items.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. The next two items that we will take, that come to this city council is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I would ask that Pastor George Beersley, and George, I haven't seen you in such a long time, I walked right by you, but if you will come up, Pastor Beersley from the High Desert Church, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance for our police chief, Sam Lucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. A gracious heavenly Father, we just appreciate the fact that even in your word, you ordained those who had sit in authority and govern, Lord, and we are told in your word to pray for them. And so, Lord, I would just like to offer up a prayer for our Victorville city council members, those people who lead us, Lord, that they would be diligent, honorable, and, Lord, that they would seek to serve justice, and, Lord, that this would be a place that people could know that they could come to trust and appreciate those in leadership. Lord, I pray for this meeting, I pray for wisdom and all the agenda items, and, Lord, again, we ask for your grace and mercy on us in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Receded. I don't have on my agenda any presentations tonight.
There are no presentations tonight.
There are no presentations. The next item, then, for the city clerk to present the agenda to the city council.
City council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or on any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. And that's all I have. Mayor Cox?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time is the time for individuals to address the city council, and this is for items that are not on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda, I take the cards as they're presented. And I'm going to explain once again that if you address the city council on items not on the agenda, we limit that to three minutes, and the reasoning is, is we can't discuss it, we can't engage in dialogue, and we can't invite the audience to be a participant in that, because the general public is not aware that it was going to be discussed. If it's agendized, the general public is aware, we generally have a staff report, and we have longer discussions. As a result of those comments, however, if it rises to significant importance that this council needs to discuss it, we consider agendizing that at a future meeting. So I'm going to, at this point in time, ask individuals who would like to come forward. And the first card I have is Dorothy Miller, who wants to testify on agenda item number three and 12.
Hello, mayor and councilpeople. I have a little prob, well, several little problems, but I got a big one. Sending our standby fee money down the hill is not the thing to do, because what happens if we have a flood up here? You can't get the money. It's down the hill. You have to wait till tax bills come out, or when you get your tax money from down the hill. That is not a good thing at all. You need to start thinking about the people and what we're doing here in the city, not thinking about down the hill. We've got to worry about us, not sending our money away when we don't have any money in the first place. We're, you know, it's just absolutely ridiculous, the things that's going on. And then this lighting thing is another thing that I'm really, really stressing on. I'm hoping it don't pass. If it does pass, I have some other things that I will take care of, to see to that. The people are treated fairly. Everybody in this city should be treated exactly the same, not just this one or that one. It should be the whole people, the whole area, and that's where I'm at. And I don't feel everybody in the city is getting treated exactly the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Dorothy Miller was also speaking on agenda item number 12, and when the agenda item 12 comes up, we'll be discussing that again. Next individual, Curtis Green. Curtis, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. Just want to make you and the public aware of an event that is coming up August 9. It is breakfast with the supervisor. It's a chance for the public to get to know Supervisor Lovinggood. It's going to be over here at Coco's Restaurant. Price is $8.50. It's not a fundraiser at all. All proceeds go to Coco's, and it'll be a time where the supervisor will speak for a couple minutes, and then also just visit around each table, say hi to all the constituents out there, and we'll be following around, taking constituent questions, problems, et cetera, and then, you know, just going forward. But Supervisor Lovinggood has been a figure of this community for a long time now, both in the private sector and now in the public sector, and he still wants to reach out and see the people all in the community. So August 9, 7:30 to 9:00 at Coco's, $8.50.
August 9, 7:30?
Yes, sir.
AM or PM?
AM.
AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. The next card is Peter Allen.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Peter Allen. I'm the acting superintendent-president of Victor Valley College. I'm here to let the people of Victorville know and the council that Victor Valley College remains fully accredited. There's been a lot of information in the newspaper and editorial comments made about the state of Victor Valley College accreditation. There's nothing to worry about. Students who attend Victor Valley College will find that their courses are fully transferable to four-year universities, and that they can get jobs in the community. Victor Valley College graduated 1,100 students in June with both degrees and certificates, and about 700 full-time equivalent students are currently attending summer school at Victor Valley College. We have approximately 19,000 students attending Victor Valley College during any given year, most recent years, and as you probably know, we have quite a few classes that are full, and we have students on the waitlist. The Victor Valley College Foundation is working hard to generate funds, to try to alleviate that problem, and accommodate more students in classes for the fall. I just want everyone in Victorville and Zappa Valley and Hisperia to know that Victor Valley College is the best bet for high school students. We have, we have put together a program, a bridge program with the high school students, and we welcome high school students at Victor Valley College. It's the best opportunity for them to get a further education and prepare themselves for four-year university. I'd be happy to come back with a more detailed presentation if you'd like to agendize it at some future date. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. If you believe this needs to be agendized for discussion, let us know. This college is extremely important to the Victor Valley and all the cities in the Victor Valley, and all the citizens that are here. Thank you, Peter. The next card, in the order that I receive them, is Mr. Joe Vale.
Good evening, city councilmembers, mayor. I'm back again to talk about the city lighting situation that is going to be coming up for a general vote. I want to thank Doug for talking with me today and giving me some information, which I appreciate. One of the things I contend is that the people who should be voting on this are the people who live in the area that's affected. As you talked last week about all the people voting here, there are approximately 41,000 individual properties in the city area of Victorville. Of that, 712 belong to the city. Of the balance, about 15,000 of those are actually the downtown pre-1973, 1972 being the cutoff date when the state passed a law that says you can now institute lighting districts. That's a way to get around Prop 13. And it's really what this is all about, is getting around Prop 13. I propose to you that the right way to do this is to let all the people who live in this area, bounded by the old boundaries of Victorville in 1972, those are the people and the only people who should be voting on whether or not they want to pay more money and become a lighting district. If you can include everybody in the Victorville area now, now you have it overbalanced by people who are new, who are part of these new lighting districts, and naturally, they're going to vote to make the people down below in the Victorville area downtown pay what they're paying, in addition to what they've already been paying. I think that's wrong. And there's several places to find the money. I have a copy of the budget here. I went through the budget page by page, and I guarantee you, if you can't find areas to raise that amount of money, I can point them out to you. And I thank Doug, and I told him I was going to mention this, I'm not here to beat on him, but paying a city manager in the city of Victorville $225,000 a year, that's exorbitant, when the average income of the people in this community is around $30,000, $35,000 a year. And when you look at the amount of people you have in Victorville city, 306 approximately, the average salary, if you include his and everybody else's, is about $48,000 a year. If you include all the part-time people, the average salary is $37,000 a year. That's just the salary. That's not counting fringe benefits. When you add in fringe benefits, you're approaching $70,000 if you include part-time and everybody. Otherwise, you're looking at around $85,000. The city people of Victorville can't afford that kind of stuff, folks, and you're the guys that are sitting here, running the city, $170 million budget, and can't come up with enough money to pay the city, the streetlights, and wanting to shut off lights, shut off signals. And it reminds me of the school district. Years ago, when the school district was trying to get funding, they'd go to the city, to the people, try to get a ballot pass, a measure pass, to raise funds. People would turn it down. So what did the school districts do? They started cutting out all the things that were beneficial to the people, trying to hurt the citizenry. That's what this sounds like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next card that I have is Yvonne, I'm sorry, Masick. My apologies if I didn't get the last.
I'm here to talk about the water standby charge, standby charge.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like you to move the agenda so we can hear exactly why you did this. I think that the people of Victorville should be notified, talked, explained why you want to do this, and why are we sending money to San Bernardino County? I don't understand that. So I'd like you to move the agenda so we can really hear exactly why you want to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, city manager, is the water standby charges on the agenda tonight?
No, that was the last meeting. We discussed that, and ultimately, it was approved by the council. Regarding why monies would go to San Bernardino County, anything that's on the tax rolls is collected by the tax collector of the county and then forwarded back to the city.
So the street lighting, which is being discussed, is that going on the tax rolls?
If it's approved, it would ultimately go on the tax rolls.
Is the water standby fees going on the tax bill?
It ultimately is on, has been for 40-plus years.
Did the city council take an action at the last meeting on that?
Yes.
So that's, okay. So that's what I thought.
Excuse me, then, why did you send out notices that you were going to have the hearing tonight at 7:00?
Is that on the drainage fee that we're talking about tonight?
Standby.
Standby fee. Okay, at this point, Sean, would you meet with this nice lady and see what the issue is here, since you're the one responsible for that? Thank you very much. He will, he will answer all your questions. The next card I have is Norman Miller. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on 12. And so, at item 12, we will be calling on you. I received one more, Charles Collarini, but that's out in 12 also. So I have no more cards at this time, but we will move on with the agenda, and thank you very much. Item number four. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you called my name, Collarini.
But you had Mark, do you want to speak on item number 12?
Yeah, the one, let's see, yeah, the storm drainage charge is going to the tax roll.
And when we get to item number 12, we will be calling on you?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. I put my card there, but I didn't look at this to see what was on this paper. I too would like to talk about number 12.
Okay. When we get to item number 12, feel free to come up. If you would get a card for our records and fill out.
I gave her my card.
Oh, you got it. All right. Thank you very much. When we get to item 12, you can speak at that time.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Since we have no more items, we have written communications. Item four.
Mr. Cox, I need to abstain on this item as my insurance agency insures Apple Valley Communications.
All right. This is submitted by Sophie Smith. It's a recommendation that the Honorable Waddy approve the enter into construction agreement for instance delivery to all fire alarm systems in the amount not to exceed $31,000. Enter into general service provider agreement for monitoring, maintaining, repairing fire alarm systems in the amount not to exceed $6,000. Apple Valley Systems, I noticed that you went to bid, you received RFPs, and this amount is ready to go. Exactly, if she's here or someone answering, what buildings or what activities, functions, property does this cover?
Good evening, mayor. This contract covers four different buildings. Two hangars, get the exact numbers here, 731 and 734, they're two older hangars that are to be occupied by NTC, the National Training Center. And the other two buildings are the fire pump houses themselves. They're the buildings that house seven engines that are necessary for the various hangars, fire suppression systems. So this would be the installation of fire panels for those buildings, and then ultimately for the ongoing monitoring of those panels for any kind of, for the detection of any kind of issues.
And my understanding is that this is a requirement to lease those facilities?
Correct. That's correct. The pump houses are SCLA property, but those buildings are necessary, and those pump houses are necessary to lease the other buildings.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
And Mr. McEckern has come back in. Agenda item number five, recommendation that the city council approve, SCLA, SCLA board approve the enter into attached amendment one to the general service provider agreement with DPS to provide security services for vacant properties.
It's also a companion item to city council 23.
Also a companion item, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, what is it?
Item 23.
23, okay. And 23. No questions? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Then item number six, amendment one to airport security contract. Recommendation, you have it in front of you, to approve, $25,000.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number six, amendment one to airport security contract. Recommendation, you have it in front of you, to approve, $25,000.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven, this is for an airport series 1300 striper purchase. You all have a staff, lengthy staff write-up of the requirements, the FAA requirements for the guidance of pilots, standard runway and taxi and marketing, and this is for the piece of machinery that would do that. Recommendation is to approve the striper for $26,575.
Motion by councilmember Garcia, second by councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight. This was initially on the agenda, was put off in order for staff and the attorney to look at an item, which apparently doesn't come into play on this.
That is correct. It does not affect this specific contract, and we are still looking at that issue.
Good evening, Mayor. This contract covers four different buildings. Two hangars, get the exact numbers here, 731 and 734, they're two older hangars that are to be occupied by NTC, the National Training Center. And the other two buildings are the fire pump houses themselves. They're the buildings that house seven engines that are necessary for the various hangars, fire suppression systems. So this would be the installation of fire panels for those buildings, and then ultimately for the ongoing monitoring of those panels for any kind of, for the detection of any kind of issues.
And my understanding is that this is a requirement to lease those facilities?
Correct. That's correct. The pump houses are SCLA property, but those buildings are necessary, and those pump houses are necessary to lease the other buildings.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? Chair's open for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McAcoran absent.
Mr. McAcoran has come back in. Agenda item number five, recommendation that the city council approve, SCLA Board approve the enter into attached amendment one to the general service provider agreement with DPS to provide security services for vacant properties.
It's also a companion item to city council 23.
Also a companion item, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, what is it?
Item 23.
23, okay. And 23. No questions? Chair's open for motion?
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcoran, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Then item number six, amendment one to airport security contract. Recommendation, you have it in front of you, to approve $25,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven, this is for an airport series 1300 striper purchase. You all have a staff, linking staff write-up of the requirements, the FAA requirements for the guidance of pilots, standard runway and taxi and marketing. And this is for the piece of machinery that would do that. Recommendation is to approve this striper for $26,575.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight. This was initially on the agenda, was put off in order for staff and the attorney to look at an item, which apparently doesn't come into play on this.
That is correct. It does not affect this specific contract, and we are still looking at that issue.
So it's ready to be awarded by the city council. This is to award professional services contract to Ludwig Engineering Associates for the Stoddard Wells Pipeline Project in the amount of $288,499.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea what the pipeline itself is going to cost? And that's a new pipeline? It's not a replacement of an existing line?
It is a new pipeline.
Because we're tying that area into our system.
Yes. City engineer Brian Gingler's coming down to give us a estimate of what that pipe will cost.
We only have a very rough cost estimate right now. We were budgeting about eight, excuse me, $800,000, but it could well be more than that.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
This is item nine, and we have several resolutions. 13-019, 13-020, 13-021, 13-022, 13-023, 13-024, 13-025, 13-026. This is a confirmation of assessment for the landscaped assessment district, or L-MANS, where they have the landscaping outside the block wall between the street and the yards of the housing. Any questions of staff on this matter? If there's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was wondering if there was any conflict for Eagle Ranch?
No, given that this is an assessment citywide, you don't have a conflict on it.
At this time, open the public hearing on all these resolutions.
And, Mr. Mayor, there are two companion items to this, item 10 and 11. They are all assessment districts and confirmation of existing assessment districts, if you want to take them all together.
If there's no objections from the city council, then we would open the public hearing also on item 10, which is the, these are companion items, but the reason I didn't, it says it's a drainage facility, I thought, for item 10, where this is the L-Man, I thought.
If you want to, as long as it's clear on the agenda that you're considering all the public hearings together, that would be okay, because these are also basically assessment districts. You're right, some are for landscape, other ones are for drainage. And I believe 11 is for straight annual assessment districts.
Because they're different items, I'd rather we handle them separately.
Right.
So the hearing has been opened in regard to the L-MANs, which is referred to as the, all those resolutions. There's no one to speak on that item. I have no cards. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions of staff from council? If not, we would have a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcoran, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 10 is a confirmation, it's also a public hearing, confirmation of assessment, annual assessment for the drainage facility assessment district, and adoptions of resolutions 13027, 13028, 13029. Any questions of staff? No staff presentation. I will open that public hearing on agenda item number 10. I have no cards from anyone in the audience. There's no one coming to the microphone. I will close the public hearing. No questions of staff. Chair's open for motion.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, all of these annual assessments are the same annual assessments we've done for some number of years. We're just reaffirming this year that we're going to do them again.
That is correct, Councilmember.
No, no changes, no increases, just the same assessment.
Same assessment, yes.
Except if you've noticed, there's an awful lot of work going on right now on the L-MANs around the city, so we appreciate of that.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11, also a public hearing on resolutions 13-030, 13-031, confirmation of annual assessments for maintenance assessment districts number one and two, and adoption of resolutions confirming that. No change in cost, by the way, for the maintenance assessment district. No questions of staff? Open the public hearing. I have no cards for anyone speaking on that. No one is coming forward. I will close the public hearing. Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcoran. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 12, this is a public hearing. If there is, if there's no questions of the staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. I acknowledge that I have at least three cards in front of me on individuals who want to speak on agenda item number 12, Mr. Charles Colerini, Norman Miller, and Ignacio Romeo, Romero, sorry. The public hearing is open. In the order that I have these, Mr. Norman Miller. Second would be Mr. Charles Colerini, and third would be Ignacio Romero.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Dorothy Miller also wanted to speak on this item, although she did mention some of her comments during public comment.
Okay, that's, yes, and I did.
Mr. Mayor, council members, somewhere in the back of my mind, I don't think this is what I think it is. You've already passed the transferring of the funds to the county, I believe, right? For the storm drain fees?
This item was approved probably a month, maybe a month and a half ago, to transition from having it on the bills to actually putting it on to the tax rolls.
So I guess the article in the paper was wrong, or misleading, or whatever. But anyway, I'd like to make a comment on that. Anyway, I've heard that, do you get any breakdown on the costs that are coming back to you on those fees? Those are any other fees that are put on the tax roll?
I'm not aware that we've produced a report that would show how much has been collected versus uncollectible for this fee in particular, no.
So you know how many dollars you're getting in advance?
I'm not sure I understand that. We don't know.
Okay, if you get, I'm just going to use a figure, if you get $48,000 a year, $4 a month, are you going to get $48,000 credit from the county?
Yes, the amount of the fee is the equivalent of 12 months' worth of the $4 fee. However, this item actually prorates it because that fee would continue in July and August, so it's prorated to $40 for this year. Next year, it would be $48.
Right, because of the short year. And the county doesn't take any money away from that for their own overhead?
There may be some administrative fees. I don't have specifics on that, but the staff analysis that was done showed that that was more cost-effective than keeping it on the bills themselves and collecting it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Dorothy, did you want to speak on this item?
Well, I'm back down here again. The thing with this, sending it down the hill, like I said before, you send it down the hill, we got a problem up here, you can't get the money till the next year when the tax money is paid to this county or where it goes down the hill. And that's not going to do us one bit of good. It's going to cost us money. It's going to cost us money to have the work done. We already got it on our water bills. We already pay it. So why in the world are we doing something like this? It just don't make sense. It does not make one bit of sense of what's going on here. They're just taking money and squandering it, from what I'm seeing. And I don't like that. And I feel everybody that knows about this, and it was even on the radio this morning, that's what really got me. I said, boy, that's good, when they're getting it on the radio now, the first thing in the morning. My birds like that. So anyway, I wanted to let you know that I feel that is definitely wrong. We should not be paying money for nothing, because we're already doing it on the water bills. We already got that coming in. And this arsenic treatment thing, the plant they're going to close down, they're only using half of it. We're still paying our full bore for the chemicals and all for that parstic treatment plant, and that's not right. It's not right. It should go down if they're not using the plant full time. We should get it cut in half, at least. And then whenever it shuts down completely, we should get the whole arsenic treatment chemical off our bills. I don't know where this is coming from, but it's really getting out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Charles Colerini?
Yeah, I have a question for the city council. Does a person who has five acres pay the same amount for drainage on their taxes as a person who only has a private home on a residential lot? Anybody answer that?
Actually, I'll have Sean McGlade, our Director of Public Works, come down and explain exactly the details of the drainage fee.
The drainage fee is $4 per improved parcel, regardless of its size. So it would be the same for every single parcel.
So if it's a house on a quarter-acre lot, or a house on a five-acre lot, it's still going to be $4 a month?
Correct. That's the way it was established back in the 90s.
And if it's a vacant lot?
They don't pay.
Mr. Colerini, did that answer your question?
Sounds like it's not fair, because a person that has five acres or 10 acres, maybe they have quite a bit of drainage that's running off into the channels and the canals and everything else. And yet a person who has a residential lot on a half acre or three-quarters of an acre, he's going to have to pay the same amount. I have two residences in Victorville that are on a 50 by 90 lot. Why should I pay the same as somebody who has a home on a half acre, a quarter acre? I think you ought to look into it, and I don't think it's fair for the fellow that doesn't have that big a piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colerini. The last card that I have, but since this is a public hearing, other individuals may speak, is Ignacio Romero.
City council, mayor, I moved in here about five years ago. I don't see why, and I don't agree with this, is why we have to pay this money onto our property taxes when we're going to have to pay them some money to collect that money that it's already being collected by the city. Unless you're going to lay people off to save money, because now you don't need that many people, because you got that much, that less money coming in. Or don't you do like we have to do? If we're starting to spend too much money, what do we do? Cutback. Have you guys done that? Have you saved any money, really, anywhere? You know, and I don't think that's right, that that goes onto the property, and then you say, well, if you don't pay it, we put a lien on your property. Well, you're already collecting it here with the city, and everybody's paying it. I don't agree with that part. Like the lady said, we're going to end up losing money. And then the people are going to get stuck with a lien on their properties.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing not, I'm going to close the public hearing. I would ask staff member to speak to this item. I think it needs to be clarified that currently, the drainage charge that's on the monthly bill you receive goes off the monthly bill, and the tax bill takes instead. The questions raised that we collected every month, and now we will only get it twice a year from the county tax, I think deserves an explanation and an answer. Also, there is a county administrative fee that will make it less, but I also know of individuals, especially apartments, single-family rentals, a lot of the commercials, that don't pay the bill, and it goes back on the property owner, which they get very angry because they feel that the renter who walked in the night should have paid for this. And this puts everyone on notice that it is on the property tax bill, and they need to take, they need to be aware of this so that they can handle it in their rental agreements. We also, then, won't have all the staff people going to courts and trying to get a judgment, ending up leaving it anyway. So, city manager, do you have any comments or explanations on this?
I don't have the details of the staff analysis that showed that this was more cost-effective than simply leaving it on the bill. Perhaps if Mr. McGlade has any information about that, or the city engineer, Mr. Gingler, they could share. But there's no specific benefit to the staff members who did this analysis, one way or the other. It was simply deemed to be a more cost-effective way of operating. So, Mr. McGlade?
That's correct. Mr. Robertson, the amount of staff time in preparing, excuse me, the $4 addition to the bill every month, if you can imagine that as each property develops, that has to get added onto the list. And the effort would only need to be done once a year instead of every month. It's just more efficient from that aspect. The county will do the collecting instead of the city on their billing.
Sean, that, to me, I mean, I'm thinking about a billing system, and I'm not familiar with the city's billing system. But it's a fixed charge. It doesn't vary from month to month. Why wouldn't the system just automatically add it? And why would it require staff time to put that charge on the bill?
New billings, it needs to be looked at every single month to find out if there are additional properties that have now developed where they were vacant before. And then they would have to, they would be due to pay the $4 per month drainage fee. That effort would be once a year under the collection through the county assessor.
It's not just automatic that you can charge everybody the same amount, month in and month. You got to do an analysis every month?
You have to look at every parcel, or make sure that every new parcel gets added into the system. Otherwise, we will miss that. We're not saying that this difference in the method of collection is going to be saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We just believe it to be more efficient and cost-effective.
What about the cash flow issue? Now we get it every month. As Dorothy pointed out, we'll now get it twice a year. It's not a long delay, but it is some delay.
It is some delay, and we looked at the fund reserves to make sure that we did have sufficient funds to cash flow this.
I think that, council members, that when we change a program, this is not an increase, but I still think we ought to be agreeable. A year or so after this has been put in effect, that we revisit it, look at it, and see if we were right, and let the public know.
That's fine.
It's important that they understand what occurred. Was there advantages or disadvantages? They've asked questions that are meaningful. And I think we should just automatically flag it and revisit it, so we can analyze it in a year or so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, going back to the collection issue, I think that there was a point raised when we previously discussed this, that in some way would make collecting this $4 per month fee easier, because it would be on the tax bill versus the normal utility bill that goes out from the city. But in thinking about that further, if someone's not going to pay their bill, they're not specifically not paying $4, and they're not paying the entire bill. I mean, wouldn't that stand to reason?
I was thinking the same thing. Apparently, some people do send in partial payments.
Okay. I just figured, either they're going to pay the bill, or they're not going to pay the bill. But if we're getting impartial payments, I completely understand. You know, my concern regarding this is not so much those of you that are here tonight that have spoke on this, because I do think you've brought up some good points, but it's the 10s, 20s, 30s, 40s additional people that we're going to have a year from now, saying, why did you increase my property taxes? They have no idea what this action is doing to them, because even though that it was written about in the paper today, not enough people are paying attention. My concern, being elected, is that it will look as if we've raised property taxes, when in fact, we have not. So I've had to rethink about this, and although I was in favor of allowing the public hearing, I just, I can't see as I just, I can't see us doing this because I know what it's going to cause. It's going to cause confusion by the taxpayers. They're going to think that we raised their property taxes, which we can't even legally do, without going to them. And because it's all in one bill, they don't distinguish the school fees from the storm drain fees from what's actually a property tax. They just look at it as all one amount. So from my perspective, I think by doing this, we send a message that we've raised taxes, when in fact, we have not. But there's unfortunately no way to really inform the public of it if they're not here. So.
We don't have a problem with staying the way we are. We're just trying to be more efficient.
And I completely understand that. After your explanation, I just still think that they're going to see it as raising the property taxes.
Sean, one other question, because I think it was an interesting one, because I asked it myself last week. I own a house, I mean, a lot with a house on it, and I own the lot next door to my house where I parked my motorhome. We own them both, and we're not violating any rules. But when there's rain, I get a lot more drainage off that bare lot than I think than what I get off my house. In fact, I have a guy come out and sweep up all the dirt, haul it back up on the lot because I don't like it on the street. What do you think is the theory behind having this thing attributable only to an improved property versus bare land? Or do you think there was a theory?
Yes, there was.
There was a theory.
Mayor Cox may know the history better than I would.
When they started doing the drainage facilities, if you take a look at the current law, there are natural waterways where when it rains, water, and this all can be calculated, water drains and can continue to drain. If you cover some portion of your lot up with a house patio or cement, it cannot percolate on the lot. It adds to the drainage, and that's the whole purpose of the drainage fee, is to increase the size of the drainage fees downstream to take into effect all the development that has occurred. There is the assumption made when they do those studies that if it remains vacant, it percolates at the same rate. There's no need to improve the downstream drainage courses.
It's not percolating very well on a lot next to my house, but I understand.
That's the theory.
That's the theory.
And council member, just one other thing with regard to one of the questions that was raised about why the same fee for this parcel versus that parcel when they're different sizes and things. Absent going back to the 90s when it was passed, to answer that question, the reality is, at this point, based on state laws, I understand it, and Andre, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if the council were to consider changing the method in which it was calculated, that would actually have to go to an election very similar to the Street Lighting Assessment District, which I don't think anybody wants to do at this point.
Yeah, bad time to go to.
And I have to say, I agree with Ryan. Right, wrong, or otherwise, this is going to be perceived down the road as a property tax increase. I don't know that we'll get enough cost efficiency out of the change to make it worth that additional grief. I just, I don't think I see it.
I have to say that I agree. It doesn't seem like the benefit outweighs the negative. So I can't see passing this tonight.
Okay. In regard to, before we take a vote, one way or the other, in regard to the one gentleman about cutting, the city has been through some difficult financial times, and reduced the budget by more than half, reduced the number of personnel by more than half. So if you've followed the reporting in the news media the last two and a half, three years, major, major cuts have been made in the city. Okay. Is there any further questions in the council? Any comments, Doug?
I had a question. I know this item was approved at the last meeting, or perhaps two meetings ago. Andre, is this something that if the council decides to not approve this action, do we need to go backwards and undo the previous action? And if so, can we do that at one time, or does that have to come back?
I would think we need to look at that item and bring it back onto the agenda.
At this point in time, chairs open for motion. It can be a motion to approve or a motion to deny, since the motion is to approve.
Well, my motion is to deny.
Oh, it's to deny it, Ryan?
Deny it.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, so voting yes means that I don't want this to happen.
That's correct.
Yep.
Motion carries with Mayor Cox voting no.
Item number 13. Thank you all for the discussion on that. I fight with my tenants, and they won't pay me, and I end up paying it anyway, and I'd rather pay it on my taxes and deduct it on my income.
Here, there had to be a reason.
Been through these fights a lot. Consent calendar. This is 13A, B, C, D, E. Are there any questions, comments, questions of staff in regard to the consent calendar? If not, chairs open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 14. Request for council to ratify the expenditure plan for the 2013 Burn Justice Assistance Grant.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 15. Request to approve the annual energy facilities compliance fee to the California Energy Commission in the amount of $26,872.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 16. Request to approve amendment number seven to the General Services Provider Standard Agreement with Astrom Utility Services in the amount of $168,000. No questions from staff? Chairs open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 17. Is request to award professional services agreement for the citywide regional drainage facilities development. Whoops. Oh, this is the impact fee study. Okay, I thought we'd handled it. We haven't. Sorry. In the amount not to exceed $92,609.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Number 18, 19, and 20. Do we add those all together?
Can. They are all, they are different CFDs, however, as long as it's clear on the agenda that you're considering them all at the same time. These are confirming the special, annual special tax amounts pursuant to these three different CFDs.
All right. Since they're companion items, I'm going to read them separately, but take them at one time. Item number 18 is presentation of resolution number 13-037, confirming the annual special tax amount to be levied in the Community Facilities District. 01-01 for fiscal years 2013-14. For the Community Facilities District, 90-1 for fiscal years 2013-14. And item number 20, resolution 13-039, same thing for the CFD 07-01. Questions of staff? There can be one motion for all three items unless City Council wants to separate those.
I'd just like a confirmation from our city attorney that neither Ms. Vias nor I have a conflict. I believe one of these, I'm not sure which one, is Eagle Ranch. We both live in the Eagle Ranch area.
If you both do on a small CFD like this, I'd probably then recommend you abstain from that one. Let's handle that one separately, if that's okay with the mayor. Depending on how the mayor wants to handle it.
Well, if there's conflicts, we may want to handle them separately. So let's have a discussion before we have a vote here.
They should not involve, be involved in the discussion if they have a conflict of interest. So if you want to handle the first two items and leave the Eagle Ranch one off, that's the way I'd recommend doing it.
Looking now, trying to figure out which one. These are just listed by the number. I don't, I don't have the numbers memorized. If anybody in staff can come and help me out with those.
Well, on the agenda, item number 18, this is simply known as the Western Edition. I don't know what that involves.
Well, I could just...
Number 19 is the same number.
Obstain all three, right?
You certainly could if there's three votes to get them passed.
I'll do the same, just to be safe.
All right. Then we still have a forum. So all the chairs open for motion and second for those three items.
And this is?
For all three?
For all three, correct?
All three.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item number 20. Wait a minute. What three did I just put together?
21 would be the next item.
21? 21. This is the third assignment of drainage fee credit tract 17131, exhibit A. We have so much going on with drainage. Staff, brief description on exactly what this is.
Let's see here. Looks like Brian and Sean are drawing straws, and I don't know if Brian drew the short straw or the long straw, but he's going to come down and explain this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is an assignment, agreement of, a reassignment, actually, of drainage fee credits for a certain tract. And what happened is the property owner changed hands, it's a new property owner. They requested the drainage fee credits to be transferred from the previous property owner to the new property owner. The previous property owner consented to that. They signed the agreement. Staff has reviewed it. The city attorney's office has reviewed it, and it's simply just reassigning those credits to the new owner.
But it's not any new or additional fees? It's nothing new?
Nothing new.
Or addition? Okay. Thank you. Chairs open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 22. Resolution 13-034. Any questions of staff in regard to this item? Vacation of a road is meant an offer of dedication for old Mariposa Road.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 23. Did we handle that?
We did.
We did. That is done. Item 24. Certified Unified Program Agency Coupa Management and Fees. Who's going to make, do we need a presentation on that, Doug?
If you'd like a detailed presentation, our fire chief can give it to you. Essentially, what we noticed in this year's budget was that the costs for our Coupa, our essentially inspection program for underground tanks and other types of activities, fall short of the total cost of running the program by about $54,000. So I wanted to offer this up as a discussion item for the council at this point to see, essentially, you've got four options as we've identified. One would be to maintain the current program and keep the fees the same. Two would be to raise the fees to offset the cost of the program and have it pay for itself. Three would be adopting the county fee structure, which would add, in addition to that $54,000, be a total of about $75,000 increase. And then fourth would be to consider and direct staff to look at consolidating the city's Coupa program with the rest of the county. We're currently the only city that has its own Coupa. I know that there are perceived benefits from the past that have lingered with regard to issues of being able to control the manner in which we inspect and the flexibility with regard to bringing business to the city. And I believe that was some of the main desire on the part of past city councils and the past fire department when it was a city department, to maintain its own Coupa. So it was more to look at the fees and also to discuss potentially combining with the county's Coupa, if that's what you'd like to do.
I'd ask the council, I normally wait until the end to speak on this, but I went through some harrowing times when we established the Coupa program. And I think that it needs to be looked at, but the first thing, we don't need to be losing money. I would suggest to the council that the first thing we need to do is increase the revenue by $54,220 so that it's a break even. We're not supposed to make money on it, but we should cover our cost. And I think we should do that now because we're starting the budget year. We're in a budget process. We don't need to be losing money. But then, as soon as the vacations are over, I'd ask staff to bring this whole issue back to discuss whether or not we need to combine this with the county or some other agreement. And the reasoning is, is because we're getting ready to use a professional consultant to make comparisons in regard to providing fire protection service. So I would like to separate those. I agree that it needs to be looked at, but I think the priority is to increase the revenues to match our expenditure.
If ultimately, the council decides to increase the revenue based on item two or three, we would bring that back probably at the next council meeting, perhaps two council meetings from now, to make sure that we have the fees collected.
Well, I agree with the mayor. We should, we should have, our revenues, the fees should cover the cost. It doesn't particularly bother me that, even if we're the only independent Coupa in the county, that our prices are lower than the county's. That doesn't trouble me at all. But they should pay for themselves.
Should cover the costs.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that, you need anything else on this, Doug? That do it for now, or do you want an action?
Well, we need, we need an action to direct staff to bring back those fees based on item number two, if that's the intent of what I'm presuming is going to be a motion by one of the two of them.
Chairs open for motion.
I'd make the motion that we direct staff to go with item two.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 25. Wait a minute. It is 25. Discussion of possible actions regarding items for the upcoming council agenda. I don't know where we started last time, but we'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. I've never started on this, so it's my turn. Yeah, I'd like to agendize a discussion about what action we should take on a number of burned-out residences that still are sitting burned out. I'm thinking of one next door to me, but that's only, that's probably the latest one. One on the golf course that I've looked at for six or seven years, and I know there are others around town. And what I'm really wondering is if the neighborhood stabilization program funds could be used for that purpose. We're using it to buy houses and rehab them. Is it possible it could be used to demolish? Because I think it'll involve notifying the owners and then doing whatever we're allowed to do by law, and then leaning the property and all that stuff. So I'd just like to agendize that discussion.
That looks like an item to be placed on the agenda. If staff can bring that back at the...
We certainly will.
Convenient?
We certainly will. We'll have, we'll try to answer the NSP program as well as what code enforcement options may be available to us.
Any other items? Councilman Kennedy? Councilmember Vias?
None at this time.
Eckern?
Not to be agendized necessarily, but I just did want to get an update. I had asked several meetings ago about the availability to have water turned on on Fridays. I don't know what's going on with that, if we could get a report back.
Okay.
Good, that's a good question. Calls on that. Councilmember Garcia? Doug, you have any items that you would like to place on the agenda? In regard to the enforcement areas that we've talked about, one of the things that I have received calls and actually gone and looked at structures that have been foreclosed on, especially if they had received a permit and some work had been done. In one in particular, they decided to build a two- or four-car garage, I can't tell, out back. And they had used four-by-four headers, and somebody decided they wanted those worse than the original person who took out the permit, and they have propped up some two-by-fours that are about to break. The structure looks unsafe, and I made a comment that it looks unsafe, and I was immediately told by a contractor that he can show me about 20 of those situations in the city where he believes they're really unsafe. I think since we have a new look and a new set of eyes from... I think since we have a, a new look and a new set of eyes from our individuals that's going to be doing code enforcement, go back and look at permits that have been issued, maybe, or, don't go out of the way, but these are pretty obvious, or you see those doing inspection to see if they need to be torn down also. Next item is, agenda item 26. Any matters to report? We started on my right, we'll start on my left. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I have something this time. On June 26, I attended the Old Town Victorville Collaboration Committee meeting. The California Historical Route 66 Museum is still on target for their November 2, 2013 car show event that will be hosted in Old Town. It will include tours throughout the day so that people can visit the performing arts on B Street and the Fire Station Museum located on B Street. They are planning on having food vendors and, in addition to that, music groups performing at different locations. They encourage everyone interested to come to the meetings and to bring their friends and get involved. It does take a lot of planning and a lot of work to put on an event of this magnitude, so they need all the help they can get. I wish them success and hope they are able to accomplish their goals. If anyone is interested or needs more information, they can call Sharon Foster at Route 66 Museum, and her number is 760-951-0436.
I'm sorry, 04...
36.
36. What date is that again?
The event is to take place November 2, 2013.
Thank you very much. Staff, if we could ask the city clerk or Doug, information, more information that we can obtain and submit that to the council members. This looks like an event that individually, certainly, we can get involved, and collectively, we can wish them success and see if we can help in any way.
No, that's all that I have.
Mr. McEckern?
Yes, it's been quite a busy week in my role as the Sandbag representative. I attended the DeVeau Interchange Groundbreaking on Friday. This is a $324 million project that will take approximately three years, should be done in mid-2016. But it's going to completely redesign how that, how the traffic flows, so that it's more favorable to the 15 rather than the 215. So it's an exciting, exciting project. Also attended the City of Asparia's, of Asparia's Ranchero Underpass ribbon cutting on Saturday. Quite an event, quite a structure. You all should go drive underneath that thing. At a time when a train's going over you, it's, it's, it's an amazing, amazing thing. But it was really neat to see that there for the City of Asparia. And then finally, glad to announce that on Friday, August 23, we'll be cutting the ribbon on the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange. So I hope this entire council will be there for that. That's going to be quite a neat event. Apparently, we get to drive Jim's car to cut the ribbon. Something like that.
That's news to me.
I'm volunteering it. That's all.
Any other items?
No.
Thank you. Have you had any meetings of the East-West Quarter, I-15 to Lancaster, since you've been appointed to that committee?
Not since the reappointment.
Reappointed, I'm sorry.
We had had meetings prior to that, but I have not had one since then.
You know, Ryan, just something to add. I have a good friend who's the lead Caltrans engineer on that DeVeau project, for those of you who drive that interchange very much. They're going to have a truck bypass from the 15 and from the 215. So trucks will completely bypass around to the far eastern side of that freeway, and we won't be fighting trucks in a middle lane coming from the 215 and merging and crossing, and people risking their lives to get, move along around those trucks. It's really going to be quite a project.
Yeah, and it actually, it will reconnect Route 66 from Kentwood Boulevard down to Cajon.
He tells me that there are some real obstacles to that, and they may not be able to do that, unless you know something.
Well, they have indicated that they're going to do it, but this is the first design-build project in the state of California. So it's, it's going to be interesting to see how, how that works. But yes, that, that is the plan. They do intend on connecting those two dots, and the Route 66 museum people were there on Friday. They want to make sure that that happens, so.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Vias?
I don't have anything at this time.
And I don't have anything at this time. Doug, city clerk, city attorney, anything to add?
Nothing, sir.
Not? In that case, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for attending and participating in this meeting. Thank you very much.